Okay, I cannot, I can't see. Mrs. Bell let me in.
She's not in the waiting room, Ms. Cox. She may be on the executive session meeting, not the regular scheduled meeting.
Oh God, we have to do that?
Okay, check your meeting. I'm. Yeah, okay, join the meeting, not executive session. Almost stepped out and called her, step out. All right, I'll be right back.
I see everybody looking through.
What?
Can I work?
Well, we have the flag. When we finally get started, we won't have to worry about that.
Okay.
All right, here we go.
Okay, she's on, right?
Uh.
Yes, I am, thank you.
Oh, yay, okay. All right. Yeah, we see Lori Sky spotted it.
Put some flag in there, plant, it's been there for a minute, hasn't it? Okay, I would like to, we can go on and get started.
Mm-hmm.
This miss, this meeting is officially called to order. Uh, today is January the ninth, twenty twenty-three, it's approximately six oh nine. I'm Yvonne Cox, it's immediately officially called to order. We do have from present, excuse me, we do have everyone out of the board members or in attendance. And um, would you please bow with me for the invocation? The Father, make and create of all good and perfect things to come from above. The Father, we thank you and we praise you for bringing us together. We pray that you guide our words, our thoughts, our actions, and our deeds, Lord, that you may be pleased in the work that we do for our children. Yes, we ask in Jesus' name for a sake, we pray, amen. Okay, power for running this so quickly. Now, let's do the pledge of allegiance together. Attention, salute, please. Our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic where we stand.
And one nation under God. For all.
Thank you very much. I'd like to say good evening to everyone that is attending with us today that we haven't spoken to, and we are very grateful for your attendance. Uh, we'll move on to item number three, adoption of our agenda policy, BBB policy, BCB. Request motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Motion is made by Ms. Parks request in a second.
Second.
The second by Dr. Schumate. Any discussion? If no discussion, as I call your name, just say yay. Dr. Schumate?
Yay.
Mr. Sparks? Mr. Sparks? Dr. Brown?
Yay.
Mrs. Young?
Yay.
All right, Cox, yay. Mrs. Sparks? But he made motion, but I know he has to say yeah. Mrs. Sparks? Mrs. Sparks?
Yay.
Thank you. Uh, the motion passes. We will uh, move on to item, our agenda has been formally adopted, thank you very much. We're moving to number four. Uh, please stop me if I'm moving too fast for you because I'm moving in different directions here. Um, the item number four, our school faculty and staff recognition. Uh, because we're doing this meeting virtually, we will do this component, we'll do this part uh, during our February uh, twenty twenty-three uh, meeting, which will be held, I believe, February the sixteenth, February sixteenth at six o'clock. Moving on to item five, the Board of Education policy, BCB, consideration to approve the minutes. Our minutes for December third, December seventh, and December twelfth. Requesting a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mrs. Young requesting a second.
Second.
The second, Dr. Schumate, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, Dr. Schumate?
Uh, yay.
Mrs. Sparks?
Yay.
Dr. Brown?
Yay.
Mrs. Young?
Yay.
And yay for myself, Yvonne Cox. Moving on to item B, trustee district review, the trustee travel report. Do we have a travel report? Not this time, but we may have something coming up.
Okay.
We may have something coming up. Moving on to item number two, discussion and consideration of the capital improvement plan for CMSD. Uh, if we can, we can discuss, uh, would you please discuss the items uh, that we have listed? Uh, capital improvement, additional improvement maintenance, and routine maintenance. And is that Mr. Little, Mr. Chapman, or?
Yeah, I'm on here, Ms. Cox.
Okay.
As far as on the uh, you have all the reports turned in to you on the additional campus improvements uh, at Cook, the area in the sidewalk and uh, the uh, parking lot has been completed. Uh, it's been torn out, repoured, put back in. Uh, on the capital improvement list, if you glance down through, you'll find at Fairview, we talked about uh, pouring some concrete for the basketball court or uh, the basketball goal that was out there. I'm getting quotes on that right now. Uh, went by Stokes Beard and looked at what they had, and it was a thirty by thirty uh, four inches thick. So that's what I'm getting quoted right now for that, and that's actually on the capital improvement list. Um, and that's pretty much, we've got a lot of Esser work going on right now. Uh, we've been checking on that, everything seems to be going well with that. Uh, see if y'all, do y'all have any questions on any of the reports?
Um.
Dr. Schumate?
Yes. I am having uh, the, this has to do with Franklin. Have we completed that big project? We first had to do the wood, and then we had to do the painting, is that finished?
Yes. As right now, they just finished the woodwork. Uh, we had a company that was supposed to be cutting the wood for us, uh, because you know, it had to be a special cut, and they backed out, so we had to find another company, the vendor found another company, and I think they completed that job uh, last Thursday or Friday. Uh, now we're looking at getting the quotes to uh, get the painting done, and I had had quotes one time before, but they ran out, uh, and then we added the uh, bell tower on. So that's gonna make it, you know, I'm just gonna have to re-quote it and uh,
Okay.
and go from there. So that, that's the next step is uh, now we have all the rotten wood replaced, we're looking at getting the paint quotes now.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I just sort of had lost track, I thought we were finished, but then I see the green, and so, okay, thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay, would you have any other questions or comments regarding those three items under uh, discussion consideration of capital improvement? Any other questions? We'll move on to item number three, discussion of the Hunt Campus Recovery, review of expenditures and reimbursements, reimbursements, payments for projects, the approval for the following. Uh, first, we'll have the discussion of the recovery, and then we'll go into making our motions. So we have Mr. Taylor with us.
Yes, ma'am, can you, can you, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir, I can.
Good, good. Good, good. So uh, I did talk to Kenneth Myers uh, with FEMA this morning at length. Since our last uh, since, since December, we've been working with FEMA's insurance division. Uh, it's very complicated because of our insurance company and the litigation that went on, so it was a very lengthy and detailed process. Uh, uh, we have gotten FEMA everything that they needed. Uh, just last week, Ms. Rogers was able to get uh, all the council checks to FEMA of the insurance payments. Uh, for, the, the actual, the amount of the council checks added up exactly to my breakdown, which I was really pleased, almost to the penny. Uh, FEMA wanted, broke, wanted everything broken down by, by building. We had three buildings, the original buildings with the gym cafeteria, the two-story annex, and of course, the old home, the Home Economics building that were insured. Uh, some, some of the settlement with FEMA wasn't broken down, so we had to work through breaking down all the settlements per building. I did all that, did all the spreadsheets, FEMA's accepted those. During FEMA's review process, one bit of good news, Ms. Ms. Cox, is that the uh, FEMA realized the litigation process, they had asked before the holidays a detailed narrative of the litigation process and, and why we settled, and that whole, that whole timeframe from, from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. Uh, so I got that to them, they understood the litigation process, they understood that the district did do their due diligence, and got every penny that, that we could. Uh, but as part of that, they realized our, our expense, and FEMA is going to reimburse us, school districts for all the attorney expenses, which, which is good news. And so Ms. Rogers is trying to get all those years of, of expenses for all the attorney expenses. I guess, I guess Ms. Rogers, that'd be both for Charlie Winfield and also Chris Humphrey, I guess, and all those expenses. So we will be able to get reimbursed for all that money, which is good news, there's additional money that we'll get for that. Uh, well, once Ms. Rogers is able to get all the attorney invoices to FEMA, then in about two weeks, FEMA will wrap up its review, it'll go to MEMA for their review, comment and approval. Once MEMA approves it, it'll come down to the district for the district, raw review and approval and execute. And then after that, the last step will be, well, because the, the project is over five million dollars, it has to go what they call an LPN, it's a large project notification, and that comes through Congress. And so once we get everything approved, uh, we'll have to get congressional approval because it's over five million. So I'm hoping, I'm hoping that, that we can uh, reach out to our congressional delegation like we did when we got things started a few months ago, and get that done pretty quickly. But once, once, once we get that approved from Congress, then the money will be obligated, and we can start repairs, and then MEMA will reimburse the district for any repair costs. So that's where we are today on that.
Okay.
And, and I guess uh, Mr. Dupree and Mr. Chapman and Holly, we've all been corresponding with, with, with FEMA. Is anything, Mr. Dupree or, or Ms. Chapman, you want to add to that, or?
I don't have anything, I, I don't know if Holly, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, yes, I will.
I don't know if Holly might have something, Mr. Chapman, I'm not sure.
We're still in the process of pulling all those invoices and pulling out the portions of it that are dealing with this claim.
Right. So, 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 so once we get those invoices in, that, that'll wrap up the insurance, uh, they'll add tho, those invoices to, to our reimbursement, and then uh, a final review, and then wait for congressional. So it is, is moving forward, though it's slow. Um, I'm hoping that the congressional, once we get, once we get the, the final approval from MEMA and FEMA and the district, then uh, there'll be time to reach out to our congressional delegation, and, and, and see if they can't help us get it approved. I'm not sure if it's House or Senate or both, but I, I will reach out and see exactly what we need to do to try to speed that up.
Okay, let's see. Ready tonight, man, I was, I was getting ready, I had a few questions. Hey, hey, I, I'm, I'm very, uh, thank you, thank you so very much. FEMA two weeks, so you think NEMA may be two weeks too?
Yeah, yeah, I think, oh, well, what, what, what he's, once, once, once Ms. Rogers gets that uh, the invoices, uh, that, that'll wrap up the insurance, insurance, all they need is with copies, and that'll wrap it up to a day or two. And then after that, it'll be about two weeks for FEMA to do their final review, and then after that review, they'll send it to MEMA. MEMA should, should just uh, review it very quickly and get it to the district as the applicant, and the district, I'll review it with Mr. Dupree, Ms. Chapman, and Ms. Rogers will review it, uh, go in, go in, and get it executed, and then we'll just wait for Congress. Which uh, uh, we'll, we'll have to reach out to our delegation and make sure it's done timely. There are, are the, the congressional delegation, once it does get obligated, and then we get millions of dollars, they, they like to do a, do a press release where they're, where they credit themselves for giving the district the money, so they'll be anxious to get a release so they can have some PR.
Good PR, which is great thing.
Yeah, I do, yeah, so, but they will, they'll, they'll, they'll come out with their announcement how they were. how they were able to secure money for the district, so.
Okay, we're ending, we're going towards the end, and we have several, uh, moving parts. Uh, would you, uh, please consider giving the board like a, maybe a, uh, a little update every two weeks?
Yeah, 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 what I've done, um, I actually wrote, wrote out, uh, the, where we are. So what I can do, Ms. Cox, I can send every couple of weeks, uh, I could just do a synopsis of, uh, of where we are in the process, and then I can send that to Mr. Dupree and, and Mr. Chapman, and Ms. Rogers, and they can forward on to, to the board. That be okay, Mr. Dupree, if I do that every couple of weeks?
That'd be fine.
Yeah, I would, would do that, so every couple of weeks, you'll get an update. I'll make, put on my calendar, uh, I'll start, uh, I'll do an update of what I just, just reported, Ms. Cox. Today, I'll do that tomorrow, and then every two weeks, every two weeks, uh, or twice a month. So be, be once at the board meeting, I'll submit it, and then, then in between the two board meetings, I'll do that then, it'll be twice a month.
Yes, so if there's any questions or anything coming to the board at that, we'll all be saying the same thing.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Thank you, I appreciate it so much.
I have a question.
Yes ma'am.
Um, how is that, is the bid still holding?
I think so, it, it's, uh, you know, prices, the, you know, a lot of the, the other, like the Esser projects, the cost of garlics because of the time crunch, uh, the, the Esser funding has very strict, uh, uh, deadlines. The, the good thing about the Hunt School is, of course, we want to get it finished as soon as we can, but there is no, no, there is no, uh, hard deadline, and so because of the supply issues and getting mechanical equipment and things. So right now, you know, I talk to the contractor every month, and we still hoping to be, be able to accept it, but we just have to wait that point, Ms. Schumate, and see if not, we'll get out the bid immediately. The thing is, with, with the scope, that FEMA's agreed to, to my scope and not the insurance company's scope, so the prices do go up, FEMA's, FEMA's coverage, they, they'll reimburse us for the scope. So the, the key was to get the actual scope, uh, approved, not so much the exact dollar amount, because if, if we do rebid it, it comes in higher, we'll make sure FEMA will cover the scope, which they've already approved, so we're, we're good there.
Okay, thank you.
It'll just take, take another month to advertise it and take bids again, but, uh, either way, we'll, 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 we'll get it done.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other, uh, questions?
Any questions?
Ms. Young, the Sparks?
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay. Hanging in there with us, Dr. Brown? Yes, there you is. Okay, we'll go to number four.
I'll see y'all next, next month, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gil, we appreciate your support.
Thank you.
While virtual.
I, I like that.
I think, I think that was right on time for a lot of us. Yes ma'am, Dr. Schumate?
Um, you mentioned, I, I think you, you mentioned going on to four, we still have to vote on a couple of things on three.
Oh, wish you're due, wish you're due. Okay, Ms., uh, Holly, I think that's what Holly was reminding me of also, thank you Holly, thank you, Dr. Schumate. My phone started buzzing on me, you all started me off a little bit, excuse that, that call. Okay, now we'll move on to, um, requesting a motion to approve, number one, the transfer of seven thousand hundred dollars from the money market account to fund thirty twenty-nine, our quarterly expenditures. Requesting a motion to transfer the funds, seven thousand six hundred dollars.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion is made by Mrs. Young, second by Mr. Sparks, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, Dr. Schumate?
Yay.
Mr. Sparks?
Yay.
Dr. Brown?
Yay.
Mrs. Young?
Yay.
Yay for myself, Yvonne Cox, motion passes. Move on to the, uh, next motion, requesting a motion to transfer one thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars and forty-five cent from the money market account to fund eleven twenty-one for quarterly interest, requesting a motion to approve. Yes ma'am?
I meant to put a fund eleven twenty-two for the incentive, I'm sorry. I know I gave that to Ms. Velma as eleven twenty-one, but it's fund eleven twenty-two.
Okay, I'll make that change, Dr. Schumate, please make that change in our notes.
Okay.
I'll say the motion again, so, uh, the transfer of eleven thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-five cents from the money market account to fund eleven twenty-two, requesting a motion.
So moved.
So moved. The motion is made by Mrs., or by Dr. Schumate, second by Mrs. Young, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, Dr. Schumate?
Yay.
Mr. Sparks?
Yay.
Dr. Brown?
Yay.
Mrs. Young?
Yay.
And yay for myself, Yvonne Cox, the motion passes. Are there any other questions or concerns before we leave item three? Moving on to number four, contract renewal updates? Or do you have any questions concerning the contract renewal update? Moving on to number five, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, did anyone have anything? I'm sort of searching the, the screens to see if I see any hands waving. Number five, uh, let's look at the date and the time for, um, the board, for us to have a work session on our evaluations for the trustees, the board attorney, and we have to make a written statement in regards to our interim superintendent. And, um, also, out during this particular meeting, board, what I'd like for us to do is, we have received five, um, five proposals from our superintendent search firms, five different, uh, proposals, that, uh, you do get a chance, if you haven't already, pick up your pack from Mrs. Wood and, uh, get a chance to read over them, and during this particular meeting, we can sit in, um, review those, if we have one or two that we would like to talk to any further, or just go on and make a decision as to the search committee that, search firm that we'll be using. Uh, at this time, I'm asking for a date that you would like to meet, if you would please look at your calendar.
Does, can I ask a question, may I ask a question, please?
Uh huh.
All right. We have, do we, we have to have this done, is it by January thirty-first? Or what's the, what's the deadline on this? I know we usually do it in January, I just was trying to remember.
The evaluations, we want to have completed by the end of this month.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to check.
And since we are on the ninth of July. Uh, Ms. Young? Well, uh, Saturday, or we can, uh, do mid-week if it's more convenient for, for you all. It, it would be after your work hours. You know, at a time for you all, um, I'll be able to work around you some of the days during the week, yes. I'm available during the weekday, on the weekend, the twenty-first, that's Saturday. I could make myself available then.
I'm available on the twenty-first or any weekday as well.
Twenty-first is unfortunately, it's, it's not a deal breaker, but if we could work around it, that would be okay. I'm supposed to be doing something else.
Okay. Now, when it comes to the, uh, Mr. Sparks, what did you say?
Uh, no, I was gonna say, I was good for the twenty-first as well.
Okay.
I'm good for the twenty-first.
Okay.
All right, so. That's what I was asking you all, or did someone say a time?
No, I'm saying what time, um, Dr. Schumate, what time you can't do it, or is it all day?
Yeah, I'm supposed to be, uh, helping with the lunching at, uh, about eleven thirty, so it's right smack dab in the middle.
Oh.
But, I'll, um.
I'll, I'll tell you this, if you have to be there at eleven thirty, uh, board, when we do the, uh, work session, the evaluation time does go by pretty quick with us, uh, when we, we, when we are doing these Saturday work sessions. Now, from our last work session we had, you did, you did get your material, your information, to sort of go ahead and do your evaluation on ourselves, right? Uh, as far as for our attorney, and for the, um, what I've been, for the interim superintendent, basically what I'll do is I'll just write up a letter of, um, what would it be, a letter stating the work that he's done in the district, and so forth, so forth, so far, basically like that, because there's no way that we can do a evaluation. And this is a conversation that I had with, uh, School Board Association. I told them, oh, as far as the evaluation, uh, for the interim, you don't look at all of those different components, but what, what I will put in there, it's basically some things that we've already been adding into different things. And you know, we're very appreciative of Mr. Dupree's work, period. Are there any other comments? Anybody, so what time would be good for you all? Uh, Saturday the twenty-first, would you want to do early mornings or later afternoon?
Early morning.
All right, eight thirty, nine o'clock. Ms., Ms., Ms. Young, are you saying something?
She is, you're muted. There we go.
I'm sorry. Would, would it help, Dr. Schumate, if we started later, or should we start at like eight o'clock, or start earlier?
Well, if we stay on task, uh, we could probably more or less knock it out. I mean, somebody will have to pick up on notes if I have to leave.
Okay. So we started at eight?
Well, I'm usually taking notes also, and if someone else could join in and help, that would be beneficial if you need to leave. If you, you want to start at eight o'clock, we're gonna start at eight, we need to be there at eight.
Ooh, 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 ooh. Okay. Meow.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna start at eight o'clock, lady, Jen, you can remember Mr. Sparks? All right, mama is talking. Sound like my mama. But, uh, if we're gonna start at eight o'clock, we're gonna look for, uh, for us to start at eight o'clock, and be mindful that Dr. Schumate does have another engagement.
I tell.
I'm saying, the eight thirty.
All right.
You admit it now.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock? Eight o'clock, eight o'clock is, we'll move on.
Eight o'clock.
Well, we'll have the board work session at eight o'clock, and that's on the twenty-first. If you all want to bring some, little simple bra, uh, breakfast dishes, please do so. All right, let's see, where are we now? Moving on to item number six, review of sixteen sections, regulations and laws. Mrs. Rogers, do you have any particular thing you want to talk to us about sixteen section about this report?
No ma'am, not really, um, what I gave you guys was a copy of our current leases right now, and the information that goes along with them. Currently, all of our lessors are current in their payments, and we're looking good for this year. We tried to send all of our notices out a month early for them to go ahead and prepare to make that payment the next month.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, Dr. Schumate, you got a comment?
Yeah, I, I, I was looking at the lease expiration dates, and is it really true that Barbara Brandon's expiration of her lease is July thirty-first, two thousand?
Eighteen.
Two thou, no, not two, twenty-one eighteen.
No, it's not eighteen.
It's twenty-one eighteen that's on here, yeah.
Yeah, that's the year two thousand one hundred and eighteen.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, I don't plan to be.
I'll have to double check that, but I'm really, I, I want to say that one of them was written for a, a really large timeframe out.
Mm-hmm.
Because one of that Gatsby things that we have to do this year is, I have to go ahead and declare that on our financials as, as revenue that we are expecting in the future. And I have to do, like, you know, the way our debt schedules are set up, like, we have debt payments going for all these years? I have to do that with our revenue as well, for any kind of leases that we have. So that is one thing I'll definitely be double checking, and make sure that it's in board resources next month, or at least let you guys know that it was a verified date.
Boy, that's pretty cool. Tony, we've got three for twenty fifty-nine, which seems reasonable, but when you turn the century clock, it looks kind of weird, give me, just check that.
Looked better to me. The rest of them are pretty, you know, I looked at that too, I thought, well, you won't have to worry about anybody with that lease but them for years.
I ain't gonna worry about it. I'd be dead.
Yep. Probably. Oh, we'll move on to item number seven, uh, FYI, School Board Association Legal Hot Topics Seminar, which is January the eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, uh, that's a virtual conference that, uh, I'm looking into, uh, participating in, would there be any other board members participating in this? Legal Hot Topics, it's from ten to two on the eighteenth.
Meetings.
Okay, number C, goal updates, policy VA, your student attendance report. Moving from student attendance report, we'll move on to our safety reports, student discipline. I'm sure you've had an opportunity to read all those, dropout reports, the safety report, number of incidents in school. Moving on, number five, interim superintendent updates and reports, Mr. Dupree?
Yeah, Ms. Wilson, is this where you wanted to do your report, or you're gonna wait and do that next time?
I think she's gonna, she's gonna do it next time.
Okay, so, um, I'm gonna, okay, I'm gonna get back doing the Friday update, uh, for the board. Seems like every time I get on my feet to get started back, um, something happens. So I, I'll get back to doing that and giving you an up, giving an update. We did have, um, um, in-service for our teachers and principals and assistant principals, uh, for the days that we came back when students were not there, and that went really well. And I appreciate all the hard work, uh, of the team pulling that together. That was really, um, powerful. Uh, we should, should see some improvement in some areas that we were really concerned about. Um, but other than that, um, I should be back at work on, on Wednesday, hopefully. Um, everything is moving the way it should, should be with this COVID. And, uh, hopefully, uh, that's gonna do it for the year for me. I don't think I can deal with it anymore, I hope that's all for me, Ms. Brown, Dr. Brown. So, um.
We're gonna pass to somebody else.
I, I hope not. But other than that, uh, we, we're just moving right ahead, uh, we, we were, we were glad to get the assistant, uh, principals involved in some of the activities that we had set, uh, for those few days that we had them, uh, at Central Office.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And I do look forward to, um, your, your report, Mrs. Wood, for the next month, uh, a snapshot for the next nine weeks, that sounds interesting, very interesting. And thank you for pulling that report together. Is there any comment that you'd like to make at this time?
No ma'am, it'll, it'll be ready to go.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you very much for your work, I really do appreciate it, all of you, thank you very much. Moving to item B, superintendent recommendations, uh, consideration, and a discussion to approve, requesting a motion to approve our, uh, personnel items.
Excuse me, Ms. Cox, I'm sorry for interrupting. Excuse me, Ms. Cox, I'm sorry for interrupting. Did you do the report for the principal update, uh Ms. Kimberly Williams?
I don't see.
Item number five.
Oh, I jumped, didn't I? I'm sorry. Go back up. I think I jumped all the way down. Maybe I need to start reading this paper and stop sliding up and down this computer. I'm sorry, Mrs. Williams, I sure did. I skipped through Mrs. Williams' open forum and was running. I was like running a race. How you doing?
I'm well, thank you.
Okay, the Columbus Municipal School District's uh Middle School Target and Support uh Improvement School, Mrs. Kimberly Williams.
Good afternoon, ma'am. Ms. Dupree and all the attending board members and everyone else in attendance, good afternoon. Um I will be going over the uh board minutes for Columbus Middle School. We are trending, it's it's a slow trend, but we are trending in the right direction. Uh we were at a one sixty-four with the first benchmark, however, now we are at a one eighty-six for mid-year data. Um I am expecting a significant growth. I will uh piggyback off of uh Mr. Dupree when he said that we did have in-service for our teachers um recently, um January the fourth. The in-service was, they were great at Columbus Middle School. The staff was very enthusiastic about the um the meetings. We know where we are, we know where we are headed. Um great presenters, we did, we were able to look at some overarching data between the two different assessments to see where our strengths and weaknesses were in the area of ELA. Um the math is not comprehensive, so each s- each nine weeks um the score is dependent on the standards, the domains that we're taught. Each each different now weeks, but in ELA, the area of ELA, those um overarching standards, they do run together, so um as you can see, the growth for all slipped slightly. However, our bottom twenty-five I know is performance subgroup uh did grow in both ELA and math. So we're very, very pleased with that. Um we have also vetted our, had a chance to talk to our special um needs teacher. Um that is part of our subgroup to make sure that our students with disability, um they are growing and they are um showing growth in some areas and some areas we still have a cause for concern. Um but we are aware of that and we are making the necessary adjustments with our students uh with disabilities. Uh the next page is our student enrollment. We are at six sixty-four. Our ADA, I'll be able to report that to you on next month. Our students with uh two or more absences for the month of uh December was twenty-five percent. Um teacher attendance rate ninety-three, um number of referrals last month was fifteen. Um seven of those still coming from the bus area. Um so now, what are we doing now to describe or how we address the challenges presented by the data within the document? Um again, we are monitoring our data, our teachers understand where we are, they understand the testing blueprint. The blueprint is um what's put together by the state of Mississippi to say, hey, this is on our testing document. Um they do understand the scaffolding document, and the scaffolding document is by way of uh what we're, how we're teaching this standards, how we are um differentiating our instruction. So we are overseeing those scaffolding documents, blueprints, uh sample test items, working with Ms. Wilson in her office. Uh we have decided as a district team that we were going to assess um if not by bi-week, within every three weeks. Uh met with Ms. Wilson on last Friday um where she has um given specific assignments to our assistant principals uh to be able to better support me at the middle school. Um great workshops for the uh assistant principals as well. So um being supported by the district as always, um we are, we have turned in our intent forms, so I pretty much know where we are with hiring needs for um this upcoming school year. Uh got that in a little bit early so I can see where we're gonna have gaps in employment. So we can go on and try our best to start recruiting and retaining um highly qualified teachers early. So I'm pleased with the process. Um the money is still the same. I do not have an update as far as our total allocation, but believe that I am spending the money in the most appropriate manner for student achievement. Any questions for me?
Great, great report. Board members, do you all have any uh questions? Dr. Schumake, Dr. Brown, Mrs. Sparks, Ms. Young. Thank you very much. Mrs. Williams, we appreciate your work, we really do. And it's pretty hard to move our children with special needs into middle school because once they get into middle school, that it becomes an uphill journey as to whether or not they're dropping out. If they're going to uh graduate with a diploma, a certificate, or another type of graduation option. So I do commend you for your work and I do uh admire your your dedication. Just keep it, keep going, you're doing great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on. Did anyone else have any comments? Okay, we'll move on to item number six. Okay, Open Forum Policy B C B D. We have anyone in for open forum? We'll move on to item seven. Office of the Entrance Superintendent, uh Mr. Dennis Dupree, School Operations. We'll move on to item number B. Entrant Recommendations, okay, now we're at it. I think I jumped a aisle down. Consideration and a Discussion to Approve the Staff and Personnel Items, Requesting a Motion to approve our staff and personnel items. So move. The motion is made by Dr., was it Dr. Brown? Mrs. Dr. Schumake.
I think I seconded.
Okay, who made the motion? I'm sorry, Ms. Young?
I do, yeah, Young.
Okay, uh the motion is made by Mrs. Young, second by Dr. Schumake. Okay, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Uh. I do.
Sir.
I do have a question, I do have a question. Um I noticed on the, on the personnel item, we did have one item where um a position was posted, an opening, as an opening, at the same time one was being filled by the same individual, if that makes sense to you guys. I just want to make sure that's a common practice that we do, not saying that it's right or wrong. I just want to make sure that it's um the way it's supposed to be.
So you were saying that a person filled a position is on the board agenda to fill a position and the board is is about to approve a position, and that position was um was being advertised.
Post. Right, right, exactly. So you have a, have the position being advertised as a vacancy
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
when the board is taking action tonight.
Yeah, yeah, that 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 part shouldn't have happened, um and I didn't catch that. Um we shouldn't have advertised, nothing happened before the board's approved it. Once you approve it, then we move forward with advertising. So if it's been advertised already, that shouldn't have happened, that part shouldn't have happened. Um we should always wait, uh no- nothing happens before the board approves it. And then everything, even though we know the position, the board been so grateful in approving uh personnel and uh we appreciate that. So um okay, if that's, if that happened, then we will, we'll make sure we 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 catch that from now on.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So what way is it that the board would would know about this with it being already advertised?
Well, I don't, well, I don't know.
No, because I'm, 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 you know, what if, I may be concerned that uh when the positions are advertised uh coming up, you know, there's no way for the board to know what's being advertised or not. Okay. So, oh, what do you recommend we do for this? This particular situation that has been brought to our attention? The uh recommendation, I'm trying to, uh I wanna uh look at this and be able so that we can uh, we're in the so that we'll know exactly how to proceed with this motion.
So are you asking the the motion, the the person that's on the personnel agenda for the position, whatever position it is, is a recommendation that's been approved by me, the person, um but I think the question was
Yes, sir.
uh the vacancy that the person is leaving, should it have been advertised before the board approved the uh the person being hired? So I think, right, is that what you're saying, Mrs. Sparks?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, and I think you were just bringing it to our attention. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so he was bringing it to our attention.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
For such references? Because right now, we're in the middle of a motion.
Yeah, we've got a, yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I asked.
Second.
We're in the middle of a motion. The motion has been seconded, we're in discussion before I move on. So I'll ask again, I'm requesting a motion.
No.
So the motion has been made.
Mm-hmm.
Uh Mrs. Young. Was that, I'm not writing it down, I'm, I'm, I usually, I'm making notes. And Dr. Schumake second.
Right.
All right, instructions have been done, all in favor, Ms. Dr. Schumake?
Yay.
Mr. Sparks?
Yay.
Dr. Brown?
Yay.
Mrs. Young?
Yay.
And yay, like Yvonne Cox, myself, the motion passes. Okay. Come out and go back down. Now we're at item number eight. Office of Business Management, the MSD Administrator, Business Administrator. Okay, this is all right with you all, board? Uh I'm looking straight at uh my copy and I'm going from the copy that I printed with what's on the um I'm a monitor just in case something has changed. Uh I'm looking at Consideration to Approve the Monthly Financials, which is Policy B. I'm requesting a motion to approve Fund Balance, Cash Balance, Budget Status, Monthly Revenues, Monthly Expenditures, Certification and Summary of Reconcile Bank Statements, Budget Amendments, and Claim Documents. Requesting a motion to approve the Financial Review.
So move.
Motion is made. Sparks, requesting a second. I'll make the second, any discussion? Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, Dr. Schumake?
Yay.
Mr. Sparks?
Yay.
Dr. Brown?
Yay.
Mrs. Young?
Yay.
And myself, Yvonne Cox, yay. We'll do right along. For your information, the uh Chief Financial Officers, uh she usually gives us an update for your view, which would be the Ad-Blurring Tax Collection Analysis Report, your fund balance trends, bank cash balance annual comparisons, student events reports, activity reports, federal programs and IDEA monthly financial reviews. Or do you have any uh questions, concerns regarding these reports? Yes, ma'am, Dr. Schumake?
Uh yeah, Ms. Rogers, just a quick question on I think it's page, uh it's on the um, sorry, the federal programs and IDEA fi- monthly financial review. And it's the second page, it has to do with ESER two. And if I'm reading this correctly, we only, we have seventy-one point eighty-five percent of the money that we got in ESER two available?
Yes, ma'am.
Except it says the project ending date was the twelfth of December of last year.
Of twenty-two or twenty-three?
Twenty-two is what I, is what's on the sheet.
Okay, ESER one on CARES ended in twenty-two, ESER two is ending in twenty-three.
Okay, because the way it's written out, it's, it says ESER two. Now, ESER three A R P is twenty-three, but ESER two.
Both ESER two and ESER three are FY twenty-three. And right now, we have a preliminary extension for ESER three for the liquidation period.
Okay.
Uh we're hoping that they will extend that, but ESER two is ending in twenty-three.
Okay, just, if you don't mind, just check that, because it says twenty-two.
I'll do it, thank you.
You're welcome. Ending date, it says the project ending date is twelve twelve twenty twenty-two for ESER two.
Yeah, so obviously just a typo, but I I knew y'all were on top of that, just didn't make any sense. Okay, thank, I am, I just want you to know I'm reading these, you know.
Thank you.
Not that I understand them, but I'm reading them. Okay, thanks, that that was the question. I I figured that was a typo, but I just wanted to get it straight.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your reading out, thank you. Because it's important for us to uh.
Yeah, we want to spend that money, that's a lot of money.
Hey, glad.
Did it well.
We only have seventy-one percent left. For sure. The other question, board members concerning this concerning these reports. Moving on to item number nine, our Consent Agenda Policy B C B L for the consent agenda. Consent Agenda Items for Discussion to Approve Agreement, Contracts, M O U, Outstate Travel, Field Trips, and Student Transfers. We have number one through number twelve. Uh board, number one through number twelve. And I'm hoping that you all have had an opportunity to read over these and uh we can uh move straight, move ahead. Requesting a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items, number one through twelve.
So move.
Motion is made by Mr. Sparks, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Brown. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor? Oh, see, she's up in that corner, let me see, can I tap you?
Well, also, I I have a comment. I think this, I looked at this school status district-wide communication tool proposal. That looks fantastic. Uh I guess my only, I mean, obviously, somebody's got to input all that data, but if they can get it in, it sounds like it could be a game changer. As far as keeping.
I'm gonna say, usually say too much, glad.
Oh, sorry.
Ms. Wilson?
Ma'am.
Have you used that before?
Yes, ma'am, it is a game changer, it's really good.
Great. And then the second question I have is just a a teeny-wenny small concern, and I apologize for bringing it up now. This probably could have been done by an email, but I did not see it until I read through it again. The the three overnight field trips for the, for the honor clinics, the band clinics. Um I don't think, I mean, I, this, I think that's wonderful, they're going. My only concern is some of the the uh places that they've got, that they, it's like emergencies, which will probably never happen. But they're all coming back, going up wherever they're going, is not a problem. But coming back, they they have places like um it looks as if, and I did, I mean, I'm not gonna dial the numbers, but just a, for instance, uh the one down to Hattiesburg, they're coming back on a Sunday. However, the places that they would would stop if there's an emergency are all schools. So um I don't know if those numbers or somebody's cell phone that could come and open the school up or whatever, but that's they're all coming back on weekends and most of the places that are where they would stop are places that would probably be closed on the weekend. I just, I pointed out, I know y'all can handle it, I just wanted to bring it up, because we don't want anything to happen. Bring it up, cause we don't want anything to happen to the kids, so, that's.
Are they doing the emergency uh shelters?
Yes, we can go back and uh look at that and speak with those um band directors about um. Looking at some of the uh, the other places, cause I know there's probably places that they've stopped before, they've. Put in place before, so we can go back and I'll meet with those band directors and put in some other places.
Said, it's fine going up, it's just coming back on the weekend, and I've never noticed that before, that may have been going on for a while.
Yeah.
And if it, you know, if the principal or the superintendent at the Tupelo Schools got his cell phone, you feel comfortable calling him, I mean, that makes sense too.
Right, we'll we'll go back and look at that, I'll I'll meet with those band directors.
Thank you.
Make those changes.
Okay, thank you.
This is something to think about, and I'm wondering, since since it is all schools, as to whether or not. There is something that's been prearranged as an emergency shelter.
I'm sure, you know, they've connected with a lot of the um coaches and administrators at those schools, the reason why they use them as sh- shelters. Because they have to reach out to them and let them know when they're taking those trip to to use them as shelters, so. Um, but we can, you know, we can go back and look at that to to ensure that that's what the conversation has been with those.
All right, thank you, thank you, Dr. Schumay, appreciate you.
So. We've got.
Hold on one second, you all, so Mr. Sparks has made the uh motion, Dr. Brown did the second discussion. Uh, we didn't vote already, um, Dr. Schumay?
Yay.
Mr. Sparks?
Yay.
Dr. Brown?
Yay.
Mrs. Young?
Yay.
And uh yay for myself, Yvonne Cox, the motion passes. We'll look at the uh dates to remember. Our academic dates, report cards, Dr. King's holiday, report card, progress report and president's day. Athletic, uh extracurricular activities, and the next board meeting date. We have our tour at sale at eleven thirty on February eighth, and our board meeting is February sixteenth. Uh, and that's a Thursday at six o'clock. Now, I will uh request a motion to move into close termination for executive session policy B C B K. Question, motion? Motion, I'm Mr. Sparks, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, Dr. Schumay?
Yay.
Mr. Sparks?
Yay.
Dr. Brown?
Yay.
Mrs. Young?
Yay.
And myself, yay, we are now into uh close termination for executive session. Now, I guess the way that I'll go and do this would be.